April payment was made yet. I'd have to... Bruce?
So, Mr. Peterson, so we have the flowage reports in. And we also are current on the payments, not only for the fuel, but also on the payments for the lease.
Mayor Kelvin, I can't speak to the fuel. We are current on the payment for rent. Those are ongoing issues that, in the opinion of staff, are overshadowed by the lack of insurance.
I understand that, but I'm trying to make the council aware of what I'm aware of so that they have the same information I have when they have to make a difficult decision. Councilmember Plowman.
Yes, if I may. I guess I have... My concerns here are twofold. Number one, I've been made aware over the past months of some ongoing difficulties out there. And I've tried my best to pass those along to city staff while allowing the appropriate individuals to do their respective jobs. But I do hear the concern also that's been raised. And I have the concern about the process and maybe what role the airport commission also plays in this. I believe if we're going to even... If our city is going to have an airport commission, this... One would think that this would be an issue that the airport commission would slash should be dealing with at some point. So therein lies another concern of mine. I want to make sure that the process is appropriate, whatever process is taken. But I'm interested in debating this a little bit further because according to the communications that I've received and the feedback that I've gotten over the past six months, there have been problems.
So, Mr. Scott, I want to go back to you again. So is there a requirement to send this to the airport commission? Or because the council entered into the agreement with the contract, is it a council decision or is it an airport commission decision?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a city council decision in that the city council has the authority to enter into the contract. The city is the party to the contract. The airport's commission is advisory to the council. There's certainly no reason you could not send it to the commission if you would like to refer it to them for a recommendation. But under your ordinances, that's not required. The airport's commission has specific responsibility to review the policies that are in place at the airport, such as the minimum standards, for example. But they are not required to be given a say in the contracting matters like this.
And so we are in default of having insurance, correct?
Yeah, the FBO is currently in default of the insurance requirements in the contract, is my understanding.
And so legally, what does that expose the city to?
Well, the city is exposed to the risk there. I mean, the requirements in the contract are there for a reason, to protect the city should any incidents occur, any losses occur, that your agent, the FBO, would be responsible for. So while the insurance is not in place, the city could be at risk.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, Mr. Scott, and maybe the staff too. I would assume the city has some insurance of our own that would give us some coverage for any of the matters that the FBO is not covering under his contract?
I think it's generally true. If the city has exposure here, yes, the city's insurance would kick in.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I understand the risk, but I just want to make... I assume we had insurance, but I thought I'd confirm that. Thank you.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was quite surprised to read it in the paper also over the weekend. And somebody called me, a couple of people that morning, and asked me about it before it appeared. And I said, "I know nothing about it." And so I went to the paper and read it. And I'm just surprised this hasn't been brought up to us. And I don't know how much we're supposed to be informed, but it seems the transparency to the council just is not there. And I would expect... We would have talked about this sometime. Or that I would expect the airport commission, since they're an advisory committee, would be dealing with this and this person. And I see Mr. Negan is in the office tonight, or in the office, in the chambers tonight. Maybe sometimes there's a reason for these things happening. And I don't know what it is. And I don't know if the administrator, Mr. Peterson, has talked to him about it or why it hasn't happened, or why there isn't this insurance that's in his contract he's supposed to have. I don't know why. But, you know, the least we can do is maybe let him explain what's going on. I just feel bad that it's shot to the council meeting. And I'm looking at my agenda, and it isn't even on... I've got the community development agenda for May 12th. And I don't know if you updated it, but mine doesn't. It's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 adjourned. It's not even on there.
It's in the minutes of the meeting. It came to the committee at the end of the meeting. And it's in the minutes of tonight is where it's at. But it's not on the agenda, you're correct.
Anyway, I feel bad that I don't have all the information on this. I mean, I trust staff and their recommendations. We always move their recommendations. But in this case, I knew nothing about it, as did not members of the airport commission. And what's the reason behind that? I mean, I'm questioning this process here. Just bring to the council, get it done, and fire the guy? Or should we not let him find out if there's a reason for the insurance? Default on that part? I mean, I don't know. But I would expect we could hear from him. It's up to you, Mr. Mayor. But I don't feel good about the process here.
Mr. Halliday, maybe you want to explain a little bit, when you were as acting city administrator, prior to your current administrator, some of the issues that you were working with on this particular situation. And I mean, Councilmember Plowman and I have had numerous conversations about this as the representative to the airport commission. So I don't know if that's pertinent discussion or not. I don't know.
Mayor Kelvin.
Councilmember Nelson.
Interrupt, but I think that those of us that were at community development expressed concern about hearing about it that night. And also about the concern of making sure that we took steps to have contact and to do this in a manner that was both to work out how we could work with the contract ending in 30 days. And I do believe someone at the community development indicated to us that the airport commission was aware of this. And so if that's not correct, I think that was stated. Now, maybe there was a member of the airport commission available. But I do think there was, you know, very much concern from the four of us that were there about how this was happening and what was happening. So it's different information coming tonight, I think, again, with what was shared at community development.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Plowman.
I think in light of the fact that this decision now lies on the council's shoulders and provided the lack of information and/or questions that we may all have, I'm going to make a motion that this issue be brought to the next community development meeting. And I do believe that there are serious issues that need to be addressed and need to be addressed now. But I want to make sure that we follow a solid process that the council is comfortable with. So in making that motion, I guess we'll determine whether or not that's what the council wishes to do.
I'll second that.
What's been made and seconded, discussion? Councilmember Nelson. Nelson Christiansen-Allman.
My only concern is our exposure right now. If we've known that there hasn't been insurance, we're going to wait two weeks to take action on it. What exposure are we putting the city at? Is there something, emergency insurance, that can be put in place? Or do we have insurance that we're willing to risk our insurance for? That one bothers me.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's going to go to the community development committee meeting, I suspect, or I would appreciate having maybe one or two members of the airport commission there since they work with and hand in hand, that person out there. I'm assuming he attends the meetings, the airport commission meetings, and they may shed some more light on what's going on. And Mr. Negan probably should be there himself. Again, I'd like to know some of the reasons for the default on insurance and some of the other reasons, if there are there, for defaulting in other parts of his contract, like fuel or something. Somebody mentioned that. Anyway, I would ask that some, one or two airport commission members be there. Or maybe to even go to them before it comes to the committee.
Councilmember Allman.
Well, just to piggyback on everybody's idea, good motion, Andrew. I was about ready to make one beforehand, but either way, I think the job will be done. My concerns here are, you know, just earlier this evening, we talked about employees and what happened with... What's going to happen and how their lives are affected. We've had the fixed base operator out there for, what, about over two, three years now? I think. You know, shouldn't we offer that same courtesy to that individual? I don't know if that's been done by staff. And I don't really care if it's been done or not and what you've talked about. But I think right now, we're able to be civil about this and realize that some businesses can struggle at times. And maybe there are some things going on. We don't know what those are. But I think it behooves us to give this individual an opportunity to talk to the people one-on-one and some of the decision makers and come back with a recommendation. I know we offer all kinds of, as far as risks. I understand Councilwoman Nelson's concerns about the risk with her liability. And Tim Johnson also has commented on that. But we've given a lot of benefits and a lot of financial incentives to businesses to succeed in our community. And we want businesses to succeed. And in this case, I'm not sure what all the details are. But I just know that I have not heard of any complaints until this meeting on Thursday that I happened to attend. And I listened in on it. And I was quite surprised. I'm just hoping the council will give this individual, that businessperson, an opportunity to express his thoughts so we get a better understanding. And we may be exposed for a short period of time, but so what? Let's give that small businessperson an opportunity to express his thoughts so we know what's going on. Thank you.
Councilmember Plowman.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to add, we need to acknowledge the serious nature of contractual agreements and stipulations that are within those contractual agreements. So for that reason, I really, really hope that the appropriate individuals are at this meeting and take this seriously. Because if this is the direction that it's going to go, the city may be exposed, and that's a serious deal. And it's got to be treated as such.
Yeah. Councilmember Nelson.
I'll just ask the question again. So do we have insurance coverage right now?
Do we have insurance coverage for the activities currently taking place in the FBO building? Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, of course, our municipal airport is listed. The main office and the fixed base operator building is ours. And so they are both listed. I don't know their value, but we'll call them $400,000 for the lack of knowing. So we have insurance on their demise should a tornado come by and drop the FBO building or lightning strike it and burns. But I guess his insurance would be needed to there if a gas tank exploded on the inside and burned it down. Since he doesn't have any, our insurance would pay for it when, I guess normally, you wouldn't. I mean, he'd start splitting hairs here of whose insurance should cover what activities. So no insurance, I mean, all tripping falls if they're out there. They're going to come under our insurance. If they're tripping over his tools, I mean, if somebody trips and slips outside in the ice, that's into our normal comprehensive general package. So we open up ourselves to some concerns and liabilities that we may not normally. But the coveries would be there. If the building went down, it's covered, so it would be built back up.
But the issue here, Kevin, is that, I mean, when you were city administrator, acting city administrator, we were dealing with similar issues. I mean, this isn't the first time this has come before the city.
There have been fiscal issues, fuel reporting issues. There's just a kind of a litany of issues. Yes, this is not the first time some item was not carried out pursuant to the contract.
If I remember those timeframes, it was about July of last year.
That works, yeah.
So from July of last year till now, we've been given the operator an opportunity to make right. I mean...
And some issues he has, and it's just delayed. I guess at this point, if the manager is concerned, is confident that the rents are now all in, then it's the fuel reporting and that percentage paid back to the city. We can make a full report of that at the meeting.
And I believe what I heard from our planning and development director is those pale in comparison to the insurance issue. So I believe we've given ample opportunity to remedy the problem. I mean, I think staff has extended their olive branch, made the FBO aware of the issues. Mr. Cruz and I talked about this on two separate occasions. Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Mayor and council, our staff has been trying real hard to work with the FBO. I've gone on a couple of collection calls and tried to intervene. We've also set up some meetings and haven't had success in having those meetings. I did receive an email today, and maybe the fixed operator, he'd like to share if he has insurance today. We haven't received a certificate of insurance. And I think that would maybe solve some of the interim questions here if there is, if he has insurance in place.
But I believe what we heard from Mr. Peterson earlier was that that information... And we don't have a copy of it. I mean, we asked for it. I mean, it could have been submitted. It could have been submitted, so we had the information. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm willing to wait two weeks to talk about this. But Mr. Negan is here tonight, and I'd like to hear from him. This wasn't on our agenda. We were ready to call it quits. And then staff brought up the FBO issue because they were met with attorney and papers are going out to serve. And I said, "Well, wait till Monday" so you could at least talk to Mr. Negan face-to-face, you know, deliver the letters. And I never heard anything else back until I read it in the paper Saturday morning. So I would give Mr. Negan a chance to speak here.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I totally agree with Councilman Fagerly. And if it takes it, I'll make a motion that we allow him to...
It doesn't take that.
...get up and speak to us.
I'm just trying to take the discussion here. Mr. Negan, do you choose to address the group?
Thank you, Mayor and council, for listening to me. Yeah, it's been an ongoing issue. I'm not going to deny it. Since 5th of July last year, I've been almost a one-man band out there. Times are tight. And I have realized in recent, I can't do it all. So I guess my reason here today, my big reason, is to try and put your minds at ease. I have brought in, or made the decision to bring in some help. That help being a sale slash partnership. Bringing in somebody that can help make things more efficient, which makes everything better for myself, you as the city, getting your payments on time. It's office staff, you know, people that can run that. It's people that can do the fueling, people that can keep that stuff going properly. The insurance issue, I've learned a lot since the letter came to you guys about the insurance. I was trying to battle insurance rates. Aviation is very expensive. What we ended up with, trying to battle it, I backed myself in a corner. Once you've been quoted by one company or you cancel a policy with one company, you're stuck. You have to go back with them. I finally have gone back tail between my legs. I have to pay even more higher rates now because I tried to make it more better financially for myself. Insurance could have been in place this morning. Not knowing what was going to happen today, I did not want to buy one year's worth of insurance at those to know that I have to be out the door tomorrow. I don't get a refund on that. If I know I have 30 days to remedy this with the city and you, the city council, I can have insurance on this thing 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. Biners in hand. The money is ready to wire to the insurance company. The sale slash partnership with approval, without approval from you guys, won't happen. My partner who's buying into this, the FBO contract is important. That's a very big, important part to this business. So we would like to, you know, get on the good graces of you guys again and move forward, make things better. And to do that, we're two to three weeks out from finishing this sale deal. And we just need that time and be able to come back and prove to you what we can do for this airport and with the FBO, offering the services that you guys have asked for in the contract and also adding to those, making just the value of that FBO for the city even more.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nelson? I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnson, then Nelson.
That's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. In the conversation that we had at community development, there were other concerns I heard raised about fuel and some other things. But I think the good news there was kind of a goal to where we want the airport to be when this all gets settled. So in light of some of those other conversations that took place about other issues out there, I have a concern that we don't just stop where we're at and say that this is good enough now. We've solved a couple of problems. I think we need to address the rest of the problems that were being brought forth by people who utilize the airport. So I'm a little concerned that we make sure that our goal is where we want to be six months from now, to get back on track and what the airport needs to succeed and prosper. So if that's part of the discussion that's going to take place and part of what needs to come forward in two weeks. But I'm concerned that we take the steps, the next steps, to enhance the airport from things that were shared.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I've been sitting here, listening to our discussions, I share some of the concerns about, you know, I learned about it before it was in the paper, the afternoon before, or Saturday morning. So I learned about it, I guess, on Thursday. But I guess the thing that I just heard indicates that tells me a little bit about what the causes of some of the problems were. And of course, you know, that's how you cure the problems if you know what's causing them. So that's encouraging that that dialogue appears to have started. I don't know what happened before, but I think that's a positive step. So... And I also, from the discussions I've had with... Are the comments, I guess, that Administrator Cruz made is that right now, FBOs are kind of scarce. I mean, we want proper performance. We need that. That's important. And but I also think that the dialogue here indicates that I don't know where... What was done to determine what the causes were. You know, I know what the problems were, but, you know, the only way we cure those is knowing what's causing them. And then we can figure out if the cure will be permanent or ongoing, you know, if we can keep it that way. So I agree that another couple of weeks would be a good idea to get this, try to get the ball rolling in the right direction here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to reiterate, it's been a lengthy amount of time. And I understand the seriousness of what's going on. But I believe because of the amount of time, another couple of weeks, I don't think in the whole scheme of things is going to hurt. Although the end result may be the same if we decide, as a body, if we decide, you know, certain parameters must be met and it's determined that those parameters cannot be met. The end result may be the same. But in knowing that, I think at least we did our due diligence and gave our best attempt and also gave just a little bit of grace. Extended that. I personally believe that's maybe an important step, maybe, in this one. And like I said, the end result may be the same. It may not be. But let's push for a better airport and let's push for better airport functions.
Kevin, can you read the motion back to us, please?
It is just to have the FBO issue placed on the community development agenda.
Do we have, is there any expectations in what material is brought back? I mean, do we want to look at this historical data going back to July of last year so that we have stuff? Or are we looking simply to see if he has insurance?
I guess, well, the intent of the motion, I can, we can amend it if necessary. But I believe if this issue is going to be discussed and it is the committee's decision to bring to the council on what to do about this, I believe it's important to have all the information regarding complaints, regarding, you know, regarding airport commission meetings, any notes they have, any... And I think maybe at the same time, we can address the whole issue of the airport commission and what their role and responsibility in this whole issue is as well.
So do you understand the task? It's a pretty large task.
Mr. Mayor, we'll bring forward our portfolio, whatever information we have, and we'll share. And we'll look at options to try and, like Andrew said, have a better airport.
Could we get a copy of the contract too, to see what the responsibilities are?
Mayor Kelvin.
It'd be important. Councilmember Nelson.
There was a lot of concern expressed about fuel. So will we have figures on fuel and costs and those types of information also?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the FBO supplies us with monthly reports. We can bring those reports forward. When you do talk about a liability, that's maybe one of them. And when fuel gets low, sometimes it can, you know, you can get water situations. And that would be one liability that is a concern to staff. And we encourage, you know, keeping enough in those tanks that no one would ever have a problem with that. But we'll bring those records.
So do we... That throws a red flag for me. So because if water in airplanes in the air, fuel, they don't mix well. Gravity works at that time. So do we know what the tanks are at now? Do we have any idea? Mr. Peterson?
At this point, there are adequate supplies of 100 low lead and jet fuel at the airport.
Thank you. Kate, council, are you ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
If opposed, same sign. Motion does carry. Councilmember Plowman.
Oh, sorry, my computer went to sleep over that long conversation.
There being no further business to come before the...
Not only, not only the computer.
The meeting was adjourned at 6:00 PM. I moved to follow the minutes.
Thanks for waking the mayor up. Most have been made and seconded to follow the minutes. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The motion does carry. Next, we have consideration of state application and permit for one day to four day temporary on-sale liquor license, Candywood County Fair. Mr. Halliday?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Candywood County Fair Association, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation, has plans to sell alcohol during the Candywood County Fair from August 10th through August 13th, and they've made their application for the state one to four day temporary on-sale license, and they qualify, and it is staff's recommendation that we approve the license and send the application to the state.
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded to approve the recommendation of staff for the permit for the Candywood County Fair one to four day temporary on-sale license. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The resolution, the motion passes. Next is consideration of final plat for Trentwood Estates Third Edition. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, Erickson Land Company is completing the process of plating some property in Trentwood Edition in order to construct a couple assisted living facilities. It was necessary that they add 24 feet of property that they own adjacent to the plat, to the plat itself, and this becomes the Third Edition of Trentwood Estates. It only impacts a couple of lots that are shown as Block 1 of Trentwood Estates Third Edition. The planning commission has approved the site plan for future development, and has approved the final plat with no conditions. It's a recommendation of staff that the council approve the final plat of Trentwood Estates Third Edition.
So, moved.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded to approve the final plat for Trentwood Estates Third Edition. Discussion. Question? Councilmember Amen?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Peterson, since that's going to be designated as a commercial property, is the water, stormwater retention plan fit in the same guidelines, or are they the same as residential?
Mr. Peterson?
The property that is being developed, could be developed either commercially or residentially. It is for senior housing, so that is allowable in an R2 residential district. I'm not sure what additional stormwater controls will be required when the final site plans are approved, the civil drawings are approved internally, but initially, when Trentwood was designed and developed, there were regional ponds installed in the plats to accommodate the anticipated drainage within the plat.
All right, thank you, thank you, Bruce.
So, discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Next, we have committee, announcement of committee meeting dates. Finance, Monday, I presume?
The 23rd.
23rd, thank you. Monday, May 23rd, Finance, 4:45, City Hall, Public Works, Public Safety.
May 24th, Tuesday, City Hall.
Labor?
No meetings scheduled to date.
And Community Development?
Thursday, the 26th, 4:45.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson asked to be able to address the council as well during our break, so first we'll go for a housing report from Mr. Councilman Amen.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, since this time, due to the lateness of our meeting, I wanted to make it shorter, so I'm going to switch into a different gear, if you don't mind, and it's dealing with stormwater retention. At our Public Works meeting, we talked about the expansion of the new elementary school that's going to be taking place over Lakeland Drive, and I, after the meeting, talked with Sean, our city engineer, about an opportunity that might pass us by, and I'm curious to see if Sean has any comments on that, or if we need to take any formal action to start discussions of the school district, to see if there's an opportunity for the city to abut, or to participate in maybe a joint venture of stormwater retention by ditch 23A on either side of the property, whichever is going to be owned by the school district and the city, to build storage retention pond sites there to handle the accumulated water that's flooding the areas in Pheasant Run adjacent to Highway 12 and the Kuzman Editions, and some of the people up in that area. They've had extensive damages, and I don't think we can take care of this situation very easily, but if we have an opportunity to help any of the citizens, even the people that live along ditch 23A and through Valley Golf Course, who have had problems with water right up against their windows, this may be an opportunity, and I don't know how we're going to address it, but I'm just curious if Sean, if you've had that opportunity, or if you would make any recommendations on how we could solve this, or if my idea doesn't carry weight, or carry water, put it that way.
Sounds like a wet subject.
Yes.
Would you like to refer that to Public Works, Public Safety, or do you have an answer for us tonight?
Mayor, members of the council, I can give you the answer tonight, or at Public Works, Public Safety, your choice, I'd imagine.
We would like to hear it tonight, if you have it.
We've, we continue to have conversations with the school, and continue to see site plans and site plan modifications. Those conversations are taking place. The drainage is being taken care of. The ditch 23 drainage is documented and is being taken care of as we need to. The Kuzman project that you mentioned is a completely separate issue at the head end of the ditch, and that's being taken care of as a separate issue.
Mr. Amen, how does that work for a separate issue?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you working on that, Sean.
Did you want to talk housing as well?
Pardon me?
Did you want to talk housing as well?
No, I think it's late enough.
Well, we can go for a record.
No, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The filing period for elective city offices starts tomorrow, and because of that, I felt it was appropriate that I announced that I will not be seeking a third term for this office. I've enjoyed my time here, working with the council members, past and present, past mayors, city staff. It's been a rewarding experience, challenging at times, but I think we're, we got the city headed in the right direction. I hope they can, I hope we continue on a even level course. And at the same time, or at this time and then, too, I would like to, I take this opportunity to thank the residents of Ward 2 for granting me the privilege to represent them the last two terms. I retired from the practice of law here in Wilmer a couple of years ago, and my wife and I are looking forward to taking advantage of, or full advantage of the time benefits, or the flexibility, if you will, of retire, of what our retirement offers, has to offer, and I would echo some of the statements, or the earlier conversation by Councilmember Christensen and the mayor about the demands of this job. It can be very demanding, can require a lot of research, talking to people to find out, get more, get more information, call other cities to find out how they do things. And I think all those aspects are important, but they do take a lot of time, and I'm sure other members of this council, or all of us, at many times have passed on opportunities, or delayed vacations, or, you know, canceled other plans that they may have had with other people that were relying on them, simply because they felt that they were pressing matters of city business, and they wanted to be present and take, and participate as they were elected to do. So, again, I'm very grateful to have held this position. I've enjoyed it, and, but I also look forward to being fully retired, so that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, appreciate it. Councilmember Christensen, you want to...
Announcement?
Yeah. Or you have an announcement to make?
Tomorrow was Arbor Day, and there will be an Arbor Day celebration out at Robins Island. Is it at 2:00, Sean? I know the buses picking people up to go at 1:00. Is it 1:00? Robins Island.
Mayor, members of the council, you're correct, the buses are picking up at 1:00, so 2:00 is maybe safe, 1:30?
1:30. We'll say 1:30, Robins Island, Arbor Day, going to plant some trees.
Okay. Earlier tonight, the Candywood County CEO program had their event out at the Midwest Technology Campus. I attended that. I'm not sure if any of the council members attended it or not, but it was a very good opportunity to look at things that are happening with our young students within our community. We are so fortunate in Candywood Colony to have this program. The young leaders that are coming out of that, I've had the opportunity to meet with a number of them, talk with a number of them, talk about what their vision is for their future, the business ideas and the business plans that were presented this evening out at the Midwest Technology Campus, some things that are just really exciting. Aaron Backman was out there. I had an opportunity to visit with him quite some time about two of the particular projects that some of the young folks are working on. This is a project that runs through our local school system, also a number of businesses in town support it. The chairs for this year are Gary Geiger and Craig Holmgren, and they were there as well. I'm not sure exactly how many members of the public were there, but I bet there were probably a couple hundred different people out there. They were showing all of the things that they had going on. One of the exciting projects that an individual had there was a young man that had made a professional relationship with Dooley Petroleum, and he'll be delivering fuel to local lakes, to boats on the lake. And so, just, this is an idea that he came up with, and it is so exciting to see a successful business in our community partnering with a student at one of our local schools to make this happen. And so, we have such tremendous opportunity and young leadership we have coming up in our community. I'm so excited to be a part of watching these young students just grow and expand, and the leadership they're going to provide to our community is just phenomenal. And of course, I don't want to single out one business over another, but that was one that kind of, having had a boat in the water and having to carry down five gallon buckets of water, I'm sorry, of gas, we don't water and gas, right? Of gas down to my boat was one thing that I could see a real application for me, being a little bit older, as you were talking about earlier, Councilmember Johnson, who wanted to enjoy retirement. So, that's a great program. If any of you have not had an opportunity to meet these young individuals, I would highly encourage you to do so. I do have a copy of their annual report, if you'd like to see it. I also was going to mention the filing for city council opens tomorrow morning, runs for two weeks, is that right, Kevin?
Thirty-one.
To May 31st. And then also on Friday, Mayor's Bike Ride will be out at Robins Island, starting at 5:00 PM, if you choose to participate in that. We'll be meeting at Robins Island. There will be three separate routes out of Wilmer. One will go on the trail up towards New London and Spicer to meet those folks. The other will go through Robins Island around that way, and another one will go up through, through the college, down through Swanson Field, back through downtown, and then back out to Robins Island. We'll have a picnic, picnic lunch out there. So, this is the fourth time that we've done this. Spicer hosted it twice, New London hosted it last year, and then Wilmer is hosting it this year. So, thanks to Steve Resendine, and he's giving me the high sign, he's going, "Steve, Marv, don't steal all my thunder here." So, go for it, Steve.
No thunder, Marv. Just a correction, the College Road is under construction, so we'll have two routes for the riders on Friday. We will not be going through the college area. And that was your route, so sorry, you got changed.
I guess I know where I rate. I find out today that the route I picked gets kiboshed. So, couldn't we just go up? Oh, forget it. We'll talk later. Okay. So, some really exciting things happened in our community. For those of you that heard, the Mayor's Per Breakfast was a huge success, well over 650 people in attendance, and our community really supported Sue Graves and the message that she shared. So, with that, nothing good, nothing else for the good of the order, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded, word adjourned.